All right, let's fire away. All right, we're gonna call it to order, the city council meeting for Monday, October 3rd, 2022. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, we just did the Pledge of Allegiance, hopefully we can get the kids back up here for the third Monday. Did we send anything out to the schools by chance?
It was going out in Friday packets, so.
Perfect.
Yes.
Awesome, so hopefully we get someone to join us for that. Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call, Jamie.
Jeff Delkey.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Jason Ring.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Here.
Scott Stackmesser.
Here.
Adam Woski.
Here. Everyone's here, so we can skip over number four, we can also skip five, there is no public hearing, which brings us to six input from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council on something that's on this agenda, or something you'd like to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium, my right, your left, state your name and address for the record. All right, see, no one's there for that, we'll move on to number seven, Council Communications, letters and other communications from citizens, do any council members have anything they'd like to share?
I was approached about if the city was gonna be keeping the Mariners' trail plowed this winter.
Okay, that's been a topic of recent years.
We don't presently plan to do that, the, uh, in recent winters, the city has only plowed the portion from the Spirit of, excuse me, Spirit of the River's wayside up to Taylor Street, the signalized intersection by the hospital. Uh, the city's also responsible since DOT quit paying for it, for the plowing of the parking lots at Spirit of the River's wayside and the other little waysides along the lake. So we haven't presently provided for that, I know it's come up as something for possible budget discussion, and we can share some numbers on that, not in the plans presently. We do plow Raider Trail out to the high school because that was a requirement of the grant funding for that trail, and, uh, the Raleigh Point Trail segment from the Sandy Bay subdivision into Walsh Field, because that's needed for pedestrian connectivity into town, whereas Mariners pretty much would be for recreational benefit, so we haven't done it to date, it's not in the plans. If council wants to take a hard look at it, uh, we can generate some cost numbers. And I think we might also want some considerations where in the waysides where there are trail gardens right up to the edge of the asphalt, maybe bypassing through those lots if we were to plow it. But absent council direction to the contrary, right now, we're going into sadly into winter, not, uh, not planning to plow the whole thing.
Okay. Anything else, Tim? Okay, anybody else? Jeff?
I have several here. Um, the, I got a couple of people saying that the audio for the work session was fantastic.
Oh, good.
Kudos to you, you did your job in that. Um, another one is I had a couple of calls on golf carts again, people ride into a breast down over 22nd Street, which actually brings me to another one, we need to have that on an agenda item.
Yeah, we were gonna talk about that, I think it got kicked off one of the agendas, I don't think it was quite ready, is that possibly it?
Follow-up on golf cart regulations, sort of like we did at the last work session on bicycles.
Yep.
We could tee that up for the October work session, if that works.
Yes, so that'd be the end of the month for October.
Twenty-fourth, that would be.
Um, several more on utility bills, which I don't think is ever gonna stop. Um, I had four calls from concerns from people about the, the new book list suggested for this month from the, um, from the library, they were pretty concerned about it. And it's something that we probably need to talk to the library board about it and find out what's going on with there.
I received a couple of those as well, I did forward that off to our library director who did, uh, forward that off, I believe, to the library board, is that correct? Yes, and I also followed up with Mr. Buckley, so our library director was very informative, he did get back to me right away. So I think that is something that they may be talking about, but yes, I received those same concerns.
Council has no authority over library operations, it's the library board.
And then another one, I think we all got this email, it was back from results from when we were, uh, talking about the golf carts, and in that email it said that Adam and myself would be argumentative and combative. And, uh, I just wanna, and it, which is the way technology is now, it's easy to see who it was. It was, uh, which people from other committees would come to us if they have issues, but, uh, in our defense, I don't think we're being argumentative or combative at all. We were just, we were arguing point about what we were doing. And I won't ever stop doing that, 'cause someday it might have to be on your side.
Yes.
Do you have anything, 'cause you were mentioning it?
I agree with that, I mean, I don't wanna get too deep in the woods, 'cause it wasn't something that the public all saw, but it's sometimes, you know, we get certain people that talk to us on certain things, and their point of view is sometimes the one that we stress, and when we fight for that point of view, right or wrong. Um, and that's kind of what we do as council members, some people are gonna take offense to it, some people won't, but at the end of the day, we're fighting for the people that, that are in contact with us regularly, and I, I don't think we were necessarily combative or fighting with the chief. Um, at the end of the day, we respect the decision, we respect the vote that happened here, I know I do for sure, and I would assume Jeff does the same. Um, you know, that's kind of how politics work, you kind of fight your battle, and, and when it moves on, you move on with it.
And that's, oh my god, I know I forgot one, but I don't remember what it was. Wait till next meeting.
Anybody else? Council Communications, no? All right, then we're gonna move on to number eight, which is council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything they'd like, Darla?
Well, for the Environmental Advisory Board, um, and I've mentioned this in the past, that we're gonna try and come up with a winter educational series that deals with the environment, and, um, we've got all seven slots filled, and it's gonna be all from, um, a gal from the DNR is going to explain the importance and benefits of trees, and that also includes social, physiological, and psychological benefits, which I thought was fascinating. Uh, Julian Nordike from Sea Grant will be visiting with us again to talk about green infrastructure. And there's a Titus Selheimer who's with, uh, Sea Grant, and he's gonna talk about the health of the rivers and the lake, and about algae bloom, and also Forget Me Not Creek. And we've got other people, too, one thing I'm really excited about is the UW Mantua Master Gardener, the president of that group will be coming to talk to us about pollinator gardens. So I think that one is gonna be very cool, they're all gonna be really, really interesting. Um, it's all gonna kick off in November, and when, when we finalize all the dates, then I'll, I'll, we'll get that information out to you, and thank you to Jeff Dawson in the library for hosting this. Um, you guys are gonna be awesome, especially with the promotion of the, of the series, so we'll be working together closely some more. Um, for Main Street, um, and I'm getting some of this information from a weekly email that, that Jason Ring, who's our, our director, sends out, um, usually on a Monday, and, which is making a huge impact, um, it goes to the bid members, and it's really letting them know what Main Street is up to, what's happening in the city, and they really hadn't had that kind of, um, input before, and I think it's deeply appreciated. Um, so that, I think it's a wonderful thing, and keep it up, you know? Um, some of the different things that are coming up are, there's gonna be a workshop from Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, which, they're coming to Two Rivers October, they're gonna be here October 15th through the 27th, okay.
Uh, no, the, the first four are, uh, online, uh, Zoom meetings, and the last two are in person.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Is that just for Main Street, or is that for any business within the city?
That is a really great question, we have seven total slots, um, and it is being hosted and paid for through the State Main Street Association.
Okay.
So I would like if we can fill it with, uh, Main Street bid members, um, but if we have openings after that has been out for a week, and people have reached out to me to be a part of that, um, we can maybe get them, them in one of those open slots.
So that's something that they can reach out to you on, and if you can accommodate it,
Yep.
after Main Street is kind of done and focused first, you could let them, okay, thank you, just wanna let that, let that out there to everyone else.
And then, I'm sure, um, Greg, you're probably gonna touch on Trick or Treat. Um, right now, though, one thing that Jason put out there today is that now they have, um, over thirty-five businesses that are going to be participating, that's a ton of candy. So just, just watch for small children bouncing off the walls as they're going down the street, so it's, it's gonna be a good day. And last but not least, the Fall Wine Walk is coming up. Um, what is the date of that, Jason?
That's the twenty-ninth. No, twenty-eighth, sorry, Trick or Treat's twenty-nine, Trick or Treat is Friday, or Wine Walk is Friday before that, so the twenty-eighth is Friday.
And that's, that's a good time, and it's actually a fall, it's a, oh, beer and wine walk, and as it turns out, it seems like beer's more popular than wine, so come on out and drink.
We're encouraging people to come in costume, because it is, uh, the night before our Trick or Treat, so.
Um, the Trick or Treat that we're having, that's a Main Street event, and then the city.
The, yeah, the way we do it is, it's mostly walking, so if you're within the district, or even close to, yeah. Um, yeah, you can call my office and get a sign, and we'll get that put up so people know they can stop at you, and then we'll have lists of all the places people can go, so.
Is there a date and time on that, do you know yet?
Yep, that is the twenty-ninth, so that's Saturday, and that will be from eleven until two, so three hours of, uh, uh, candy grabbing. And we had, uh, close to eight hundred kids last year.
Oh.
And so it is, uh, I mean, if you're, if you're not have kids, you're not participating, you wanna come people watch, um, it should be crazy downtown with people, so, uh, it should be a lot of fun.
You love when downtown's flooded. Okay, anybody else? Jeff?
Last ones, we started the preliminary stuff for the personnel and finance, and we will keep you posted on what's coming up and what's going on, our next meeting will be Thursday at six o'clock.
Correct.
So anybody that wants to attend, feel free.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to number nine, which is the City Manager's Report, Craig?
Sure, first up, I have an introduction, so I'll, I'll switch over to that. Um, very pleased to introduce tonight to the council and the community our new City Engineer and Public Works Director, Matt Heckin-Liible, uh, Matt comes to us with thirty years of experience as a professional engineer, he's a UW Milwaukee grad with his BS degree in civil engineering, uh, spent the first eight years of his career working in the private consulting engineering business, starting with a, a great firm that ceased to exist in Manitowoc County a year ago, but SMI. He was with SMI right out of college, early in his career for four years, then was with Mead and Hunt for another approximately four years. Uh, the past twenty-two years has served in various capacities with the city of Green Bay, most recently as utility manager within Public Works, uh, for the sanitary and stormwater utilities. Uh, but he also has background in, uh, other facets of Public Works, like street design, and, uh, the stuff up top as well, going back to his, uh, civil consulting engineering days. So, uh, Matt has joined us at this point on a part-time basis, as he transitions from his job in Green Bay to here, working mornings in Green Bay, afternoons at the office here at City Hall. Until he becomes full-time, Scott All, our, our staff civil engineer, is holding down the fort, and, and as the acting department head, Matt will assume the full department head responsibilities on Tuesday, October twenty-five, uh, it's Tuesday, October twenty-fifth is when he does start full-time. So I've offered him the opportunity to make a brief comment, and then to shake the hands of the council members, Matt?
It's on yours, so the folks at home can hear, please take the mic.
Okay, take the microphone.
Yes. This might be part of permanent.
Public record.
Public record of, uh, how I made an impression for the first time.
Sure.
Um, it's an honor to be here tonight, um, it's an opportunity presenting itself. I just recently found out about it, we went through the process, actually fairly rapidly. Um, even though I work in Green Bay, I am a twenty-year resident of Manitowoc County, living just south of Francis Creek, so, uh, again, this is an opportunity in my backyard, and while I was in the consulting firms, uh, time of my life, uh, I enjoyed the small town, if you wanna call it, you know, Two Rivers isn't small. Um, I like the camaraderie between the, uh, staff and the council of townships, and I hope I can, uh, assist you in any way possible. Um, feel free to give me a call, send me an email, I will see how I can, uh, assist, where I can assist, and, uh, we can move forward together and help build Two Rivers into the community that it is, and potentially can be, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Now that would be argumentative and combative. Matt, I was just asking, he's, he's working with his schedule to see if he can attend both, uh, the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee meetings this week. But he will become a fixture at those meetings, along with Scott and, uh, the various heads of our city utilities that you're all very comfortable working with, and couldn't be more pleased having Matt as an addition to our team. And Darla, I think some of the green infrastructure stuff, you and your committee are talking about, uh, gonna be particularly apt, so, yeah, thank you. Uh, jumping into my report for tonight, uh, already into October, uh, staffing updates. Uh, we are currently, we do have a vacancy for a full-time park and cemetery maintenance worker with city forester responsibilities, that position will be vacated as of this Friday due to a resignation. Uh, we are also, uh, have ongoing recruitment for utility administrative assistant with a deadline of this Wednesday, October fifth, uh, if applicants wanna be assured that their, their application will be considered. So, uh, that's an important, uh, high-level support position for both the water and electric utilities, and I know most, both of those department heads would welcome any applications that come in, uh, for that position. Um, Gina Sampe, our, uh, former utility administrative assistant, has taken an internal promotion to the, uh, inspections assistant zoning administrator position that Vicky Berg just recently retired from. Uh, at the end of the year, we'll be seeing the retirement of Dan Glosser, our certified meter technician in the electric area. Uh, we did budget for overlap in that position, and as I show on the next slide, uh, we do have, uh, a new hire who will start next week, Monday, okay. Um, Matt is in a very neat office on the second floor of City Hall, if you haven't been in that office lately, it might put you into shock, but it's, uh, uh, and, and replaces Mr. McDonald, who we honor tonight with the retirement resolution. Our new electric meter technician, shown in the center there, is Stephen Gretz. Uh, he comes with his journeyman's licensure in, as an electrician, too, he's a journeyman electrician. Oh, okay, thank you, so that is Mr. Skornicka, okay, okay. City manager didn't do this slide, uh, but, but the, uh, the handsome fellow in the middle is Bo Skornicka, who is our new certified water operator and onboard when, uh, Matt? Okay, very good, thank you, Andrew. And, uh, then, uh, to the right, uh, Stephen Gretz, electric meter technician. Um, and he, now that I got it straight, he is a journeyman, uh, electrician, and intends to be continuing to pursue his master electrician, and then, um, it's an added bonus at the same salary range, would also be qualified to be an electrical inspector, so with the recently filled utility electrician position, and then filling the meter tech position with, um, with Mr. Gretz as, as the new person, we'll actually have two electricians on staff, uh, which is not a bad thing at all within the electric utility. So, uh, well done, uh, to our electric utility superintendent with, uh, a lot of assistance, like on all these positions, uh, from Jamie, our, our clerk and HR director. Time to pick up leaves again, um, couple of weeks out, uh, leaf collection starts Monday, October seventeen, and it'll continue until Thanksgiving typically, then longer after the Thanksgiving holiday, if the need warrants, and if the weather permits, if we aren't into slush and snow and everything by then. Uh, the usual rotation, Mondays on the east side, east of the East Twin River, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays between the rivers, and Fridays on the south side, which in Two Rivers is west of the West Twin River. So, uh, that, uh, that starts up. Uh, of course, the, if you're antsy to get rid of your leaves, the compost site on Memorial Drive, or, excuse me, on Woodland Drive, is also open. Seventeenth, Reconstruction, I don't know that I updated this, but Scott, do you, am I, you wanna grab the mic and maybe give us a quick update, if you would, on where that project stands, both east of the bridge and the one block west of the bridge? Thank you.
Actually, the, it looks like the updated information's on there, contractor completed the underground utilities last week. They performed street grading and gravelling, uh, last week, they, they continue to do minor stuff now, but the big, big thing is up October fourth, tomorrow, I believe they're gonna start paving half of the road, both sides at a time.
So they've got string lines out now for paving tomorrow?
They're paving on the east side, they're paving the north half first, and, uh, And on the west side, between Jeff, East Park and Jefferson, they're gonna be paving the south side. And then about a week later, they'll pave the other half. The other thing to note is they plan on, at some point, probably this week, planning closing the Seventeenth Street Bridge between Jefferson and East Street to allow paving of the East Street intersection. And hopefully get it open up Saturday or Sunday. They figure about a four-day closure. And during that time, they should have a lane of traffic on East Street going through on the east side of the intersection. So that's why the bridge would be closed. So.
Watch for that closure announcement tomorrow or Wednesday. Yeah, thank you, Scott. I appreciate it. Getting our infrastructure work done. Um I didn't provide an update here, but uh Andrew, where are we on the scattered site laterals? I think we're up to, okay, so all fifty will be done by the end of this week. That's good to know. Thank you. Uh in the electric utility area, we would like to congratulate congratulate Paul Fabian, our electric line crew foreman, on receipt of uh WPPI Energy Shining Star Award. This recognizes employees who are showing growth and leadership with proven dedication to strategic initiatives in a utility. Uh you see here um the quote from our uh utility director, Brian Delman. Paul is a fantastic leader for Two Rivers Utilities. He's exhibited great organizational skill, managing multiple crew members as well as working with other departments. The utility's a better place because of his involvement. And Brian also notes that Paul exhibits a dedication to both his craft and a commitment to his community. You know, sometimes we don't like the rates we have to charge based on power charges, but uh we take a backseat to no one, I would say, when it comes to the level of service provided by our electric utility, especially responding to outages and uh being dedicated to keeping the lights on reliably here in Two Rivers. So congrats to Paul. Paul's a long-term employee and just does an outstanding job as Brian's number two at the utility. Uh also, our electric utility director, uh Brian Delman, uh completed WPPI Energy's Joint Action Leadership Certification Program. Again, WPPI is a joint action agency under state law. Uh as noted here, this is a multi-year curriculum that helps utility leaders deepen their knowledge of the joint action model, enhances utility or unity among WPPI energy members, and promotes member engagement. Uh at the most recent WPPI annual meeting, uh Two Rivers Utilities was recognized with um reaching its one-hundred-twenty-year anniversary of of its founding. And Jim Stewicki, who I believe is Sturgeon Bay Utilities, uh congratulated, uh also WPPI's energy board chair, uh congratulated our utility and presented the plaque as shown uh to Brian Delman, who accepted on uh Two Rivers' behalf. Uh again, uh Two Rivers Utilities, our electric utility, has served uh well, water too, I guess, has served residents and businesses in Two Rivers since nineteen oh two and is one of fifty-one owner members of WPPI Energy. Congrats.
One round of applause for Brian and Paul.
Uh as far as community events upcoming, we'd like to remind everybody that uh the Thirty-Eighth Annual Apple Fest, now under the um organization and direction of Two Rivers Rotary, is this coming Saturday, October eighth, nine to three downtown in Central Park on and on Washington Street. So uh we're all eager to see this event, not only at back now for the second year after COVID, but eager to see it uh return to to being one of the major festivals of the year in Two Rivers. So please turn out and show your support for Rotary and the vendors. I know they've got at least three Apple vendors. And um Apple Fest has always held a special place in the community's heart, capping off our our warm weather, sometimes snows on Apple Fest, but our warm weather season of events. So please come downtown and uh and support the event and uh stop into the downtown uh stores and drop a buck or two while you're at it, please. Uh also, uh this coming weekend, Saturday evening, at the Hamilton Wood Type and Printing Museum is uh the Nisho de Charitable Foundation uh annual Badger Night, Dick Rohr Memorial Badger Night. Uh tickets, I'm sure, are still available at forty dollars per person. You can contact Mike Lenth or Kelly Rohr, whose contacts are listed there. Uh Jared Aberdarras is the guest speaker. Bill Jarrett's worth the price of admission right there is the master of ceremonies. Might be just a little talk about the status of the coaching ranks at at UW Madison after uh uh events of this weekend, including losing to a certain former coach, dang it. Also known as the last straw. So uh yeah, yeah, that's on Saturday. Uh community conversations continue at the Lester Public Library. Lot of great opportunities uh for the community at the library. This uh this uh regular offering, which about a month ago featured the Two Rivers Police Department and its new K-9 officer on, what date is this?
October twelfth.
Thank you. I'm probably looking right past it. On October twelfth, um next week, Wednesday, we'll feature our uh city clerk, Jamie Jackson, answering questions about voting, registering to vote, absentee ballots, and uh the new Badger Book system. So looking forward to that. And Jamie, thank you. Thanks to the library for providing the venue for that. Uh Central Park West three sixty-five, not a lot more in the way of update. I hope within a couple of weeks to have a couple more funding commitments to announce. We still stand at just over seven hundred thousand dollars or eighty-seven and a half percent of fundraising goal. Uh plans and specs are out there. I think there were eight plan holders last I saw. Good opening scheduled for October twenty-six. Within the past three weeks, the WEDC, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, did announce a new grant program for vibrant spaces, typically in downtowns of communities. Applications for that are due by January thirty-one with matching grants of twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars from WEDC. Uh nothing's a lock, nothing's guaranteed, but in talking with both our community development director and uh the Main Street Program Director, um it looks like this may be a program that could bode well as far as an application for Central Park West. Projects have to be started within twenty twenty-three, not a problem there, and uh completed, I believe, within twenty twenty-three. So um more on that later. But uh the city will be working in cooperation with Main Street and Parks and Rec, probably seeking some support letters from local groups like TRBA on an application for that vibrant spaces program from WEDC. So that would be good. Also, there are a couple upcoming fundraisers. Tickets are are available. Encourage you to go online for Rockin' for the Park, rock and roll music from the fifties through the eighties, and a farm-to-table dinner catered by, I'm forgetting the name of the caterer, um Heirloom Kitchens, wonderful Heirloom Kitchens out of Kakana. It's done a lot of local events here. That is coming up on October twenty-seven over at Sepia Chapel. And also, uh Port Sandy Bay on Wednesday, October nineteenth, is doing another one of their fundraiser nights from four to eight PM on the nineteenth, fifteen percent of all sales. Out at Port, uh go to Central Park West three sixty-five. And we thank Travis Cotto and the folks at Port uh for that support for the project. Uh we think we've got at least one more benefit night coming up at a local business uh that'll be announced shortly. Uh Two Rivers Utilities, my account was launched September twenty. Uh I don't know how many, Brian, do you know how many folks we have signed up now? Three hundred and seven, as of the end of the day today. So that's up a couple hundred from last week. Um I've seen some social media traffic on it. Uh if you run into any glitches trying to sign up for my account, customer service staff here at City Hall happy to walk you through it. If you stop in, or better yet, give them a call while you're here, while you're at your computer. And this really is intended to give people an enhanced ability to track usage, both in terms of dollars and volumes, units of water, units of energy consumed. You can sign up to securely pay bills online, paperless or auto pay, get energy alerts. Uh a lot of good stuff there. We may very well want to have uh Brian uh or other staff demo that at at a future meeting, kind of do a walkthrough. So that goes along with the new billing format, which we know people would like access in real time to more information. We've heard that. Uh wanted to note that uh the city did on September twenty-second uh receive the wire transfer from our sister city of Domoslitza in the Czech Republic. Uh their their city budget is providing one hundred thousand Czech crowns, which is an equally impressive three thousand nine hundred ten dollars American uh to assist with the friendship table sculpture that's proposed uh to be located in one of our parks done by Vaclav Fiala, a a noted Czech sculptor. Uh the Sister Cities Committee and the uh kind of family are handling the private fundraising on that. But uh the exchange of uh this, these funds were from city to city, and we'll be cutting a check then to the Sister Cities Committee so they can go forward and do their good things. Uh room tax update. Uh the graphic there might be a little small, but um you can see, uh we've been tracking uh since two thousand eighteen. Uh the rightmost bar for each month is represents two thousand and twenty-two. Bottom line, we're doing darn good. Uh through August, and understand, August room taxes need to be turned into the city by the end of September, so end of August is our best available data. But uh through the end of August, we total one hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. That compares to about one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars at this time last year, twenty thousand better. Ninety-one thousand through August the year before, and then seventy-seven thousand and change through August in each of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So um not guaranteeing that, and frankly, not projecting that we will equal last year's total. Remember, the uh Ryder Cup was in September last year, and that contributed contributed hugely to an outsized September room tax revenue of forty-two thousand, two thirty-one. Uh I believe right now we're projecting in the room tax budget uh two hundred twenty thousand for this year, which still qualifies as a heck of a good year. And we are now over forty um individual vacation rentals. Uh presently registered with the county, and remember, after the first of next year, they will likewise have to register with the city, per the ordinance council passed. So as a gauge of visitor activity, though, we're still, we're still doing good. Um Washington Park Tennis Courts work began today. Uh council authorized the contract with Northeast Asphalt uh for the paving work uh two weeks ago. Our Public Works crews uh began removing the existing asphalt today. Northeast will be in yet this fall to do the resurfacing. That's going to be pretty much it for the fall. Then in the spring, the courts will be sealed and marked, and the new posts and nets installed. As we see uh an upgrade and conversion of the three existing tennis courts to six pickleball courts and one tennis court. So the this one was a while incoming, but it's good to see some progress out there. Uh wanted to just follow up, and I'll try to do this regularly on matters raised at the last regular meeting that we didn't have answers for at that time, but uh there's been follow-up. Uh Kathy Dahlke, citizen, had expressed a concern about utility bills and had provided copies of utility bills for uh her residents on Adams Street. I just would say utility staff has reviewed the consumption history for the property and has reached out about meeting on-site with the property owner to discuss factors that may be contributing to the metered usage levels. And that that needs to be finalized, but I'm confident that'll be happening. And there. Also, uh council member Dahlke had mentioned at the last meeting a citizen concern about police response time to an accident. Always of concern. We want to provide the best possible emergency response, understanding that sometimes police and fire can get pretty booked up. Uh Assistant Chief Minert uh did uh get information on the accident, reviewed the communication system records pertaining to this matter. Uh it was determined, as has been reported back to Jeff, I understand, uh response time to the accident in question was in fact four minutes, not twenty minutes as reported by the citizen. And again, this that isn't to take issue with the citizen, but when those concerns are raised, I I think it's good we hear the rest of the story. So that's uh that's the rest of that story. And by the way, that was at a time uh the police were dealing with a a death situation and several other things. So it was indeed a four-minute response.
Greg, I want to uh thank Ben, because he was pretty spot-on when he was trying to give me the information and get information from me. But I've been working a lot hours, so it it took a bit of time to get to the bottom of it, but yeah, he was pretty adamant we'll get into the bottom. So.
Very good.
Thank you, Ben.
And understand, we, the police department, our other departments are always happy to respond to those requests, whether raised here or whether council members choose to reach out to them one-on-one. So thank you. That's all I've got. Oh, one thing, if I might add, um Darla mentioned pollinator gardens earlier, and this had come up earlier this year and then kind of languished over the summer. Woodland Dunes does have some grant monies for uh extending pollinator gardens and native uh native grasses and and flower plantings. We had identified an area along Mariners Trail on the city-owned property just north of the Chamber of Commerce to basically uh first of all, kill off a good-sized area of turf there on either side of the tree trail, and then next year, plant uh plugs or or small transplants of different pollinator species. Uh I heard from uh the engineering firm that is handling that last week, and they're going to stake the area we'd identified on maps. This goes back to when Terry was here as our our Parks and Rec Director. Uh so we as staff can review it, but then if all is well, they uh they would like by the late this week, early next, they'll go out and do a spraying of that area. We've talked to Woodland Dunes about working together to put some signage up, basically letting people know it's going to look worse before it looks better. But here's what's going on in that area. So you likely see some activity out there uh with the area getting staked out this week and the the spraying done late this week or early next.
And some signs would probably be a good idea, not that people think, holy cow, what are they doing, or let happen here in this particular area?
Yeah, I think some large signs that maybe not big enough for folks on the highway to read, but at least for trail users to understand. And we're we're going to reach out to the uh the chamber as well, because they're right there, so they're aware of it.
Good idea.
Yep, thank you.
Very good. All right, is that all?
That's all.
Okay, on to number ten, which is the consent agenda. Under A, presentation of minutes, we have one. The city council meeting for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, we have three. We have a public utilities meeting from September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. We also have a police and fire commission meeting from September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and a personnel and finance committee meeting from September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, applications and petitions, we have three. There is an application for a temporary Class B slash Class B retailer's license for the Rotary Club of Two Rivers for the Rotary Road Rally, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at Woodland Dunes, three thousand Hawthorne Avenue in Two Rivers. We also have applications for cigarette and tobacco producers retail license for Sweet Fire Tobacco Number Sixty-four at eighteen oh three Washington Street, Two Rivers, for the period of October third, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Sorry, I thought that was a bullet point there at first. Twenty twenty-three for cigarettes and tobacco, which will be sold over the counter. The recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. The recommended action for consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. I'm looking for a motion on that. Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second? Tracy, thank you. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. On to eleven, city council formal items. Under A, we have a proclamation naming October second through the eighth as Mental Illness Awareness Week. The recommended action is a motion to read and adopt that proclamation. I'll kick that over to Greg.
This uh has been requested uh by a community group and uh is presented for council's action. Obviously, um mental health, community mental health is an important subject. Issues of of community mental health have become even more significant post-COVID with a lot of the things that folks have gone through and do impact on a daily basis, particularly our public safety departments, but many aspects of our city operations as well, dealing with the public that in in many respects is underserved with resources for uh promoting mental health and addressing mental health issues. So with that, would recommend approval of uh the proclamation, which I'm prepared to read if you wish.
Okay. Um, why don't you just go ahead and read it?
Okay, sure. Proclamation. Whereas in 1990, the U.S. Congress established the first full week of October as Mental Illness Awareness Week in recognition of the National Alliance on Mental Illness's efforts to raise mental illness awareness. And whereas since 1990, mental health advocates across the country have joined together the first week of October to sponsor various activities to raise awareness through outreach, education, and advocacy. And whereas, uh, the National Alliance on, I'm sorry, whereas, uh, Mental Illness Awareness Week is a time to raise public awareness of serious mental illnesses such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, post-traumatic disorder, obsessive-compulsive disorder, and borderline personality disorder. And whereas approximately 60 million Americans experience mental health problems in any given year, one in 17 live with the most serious conditions, and less than one-third seek treatment. Whereas, and whereas, a half of all lifetime cases begin at by the age of 14, 10 or more years may pass between the onset of symptoms and being diagnosed. And whereas, early diagnosis is often the key to recovery with treatment that may include combinations of medication, cognitive behavioral therapy, interpersonal therapy, peer support groups, or community services, diet, sleep, exercise, and social support networks. And whereas, education is essential to combating mental illness, now therefore, the city of Two Rivers in recognition of this event do hereby proclaim the week of May, sorry, October 2 to 8, 2022 as Mental Illness Awareness Week. In the city of Two Rivers, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, uh, dated this third day of October 2022.
All right, thank you very much. Looking for a motion for this?
I'll make a motion.
Tracy, second by Jason. Thank you very much. Any council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Perfect. On to B, proclamation by resolution naming October 2nd through the 8th, 2022 as Public Power Week. The recommended action is a motion to read and adopt the proclamation. Greg?
Okay, it, uh, it is Public Power Week, and, uh, the resolution, again, from, for a community that has now for 120 years been a public power community, is, uh, presented for council action. And, uh, uh, who better to read it than our electric utilities director, Mr. Delman?
Thank you. Um, Public Power Week proclamation, whereas we, the citizens of Two Rivers, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, non-for-profit electric utility, and as consumers and owners of our, our electric utility have a direct say in utility operations policies. And whereas, Two Rivers Utilities provides our homes, businesses, social services, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. And whereas, Two Rivers Utility is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protections, and economic development and safety awareness. And whereas, rising costs of electric rates across the country have renewed a public interest in an appreciation for the concept of locally-controlled, community-owned public power systems. And whereas, Two Rivers Utilities is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place in which to work and live. Now therefore, be it resolved that Two Rivers Utilities will continue to work to bring lower-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses just like it has since 1902, the year in which the utility was created to serve all citizens of Two Rivers. And be it further resolved that the week of October 2nd through the 8th be designated as Public Power Week and ordered under Two Rivers Utilities for its contributions to the community and make it, and make its consumer owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of its overall contributions to their well-being. And be it further resolved that our community joins hands with more than 2,200 other public power systems in the United States that through local community ownership ensure cost-cutting service for electric consumers. Therefore, that City of Two, City Council of the City of Two Rivers hereby proclaims the week of October 2nd through the 8th, 2022 as Public Power Week dated this third day of October 2022.
All right, thank you, Brian. Uh, looking for a motion on this one. Scott, do I have a second? Tim, thank you very much. Any council discussion? Seeing this is in resolution form, we will do a roll call vote. Jamie?
Jeff Dahlke.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys, for that. Going on to C, designation of official trick-or-treat hours. The recommended action is a motion to designate trick-or-treating hours as, uh, 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Monday, October 31st, 2022. Uh, maybe just a brief background there, Greg?
Yeah, I, I guess I can honestly say for better than 15 years, Two Rivers, through action of the council, is typically designated, consistently designated, the real Halloween, October 31st, uh, for trick-or-treating hours, uh, encouraging, uh, folks to observe, obviously, this doesn't have force of law, but encouraging folks to observe 4:30 to 7 as trick-or-treat hours, to turn their porch light ons if they want to welcome little ghosts and goblins to the front door. So, would, would ask that the council, uh, take this formal action. I know I've seen questions out there. Truth be known, I think we've probably have already posted this, but had not got it on an agenda yet, but would ask for the council's endorsement of that continued tradition of on the real Halloween at, uh, 4:30 to 7. Not to be confused with downtown trick-or-treating, as was mentioned early, earlier, that's up and down the street on Washington Street and thereabouts, the morning of Saturday, the 29th. But, uh, this would be for the old-fashioned door-to-door neighborhood trick-or-treating.
Okay, looking for a motion on this. Tim, do I have a second? Tracy? Perfect. Any council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. On to D, resolution upon retirement for James McDonald, completing 14 years as the Public Works Director slash City Engineer. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt that resolution. And Greg?
This is, uh, again, Mr. McDonald retired on September 2. Uh, this resolution notes his numerous accomplishments during his almost, uh, 14-year career, uh, as city engineer. Uh, we have it down here to waive reading, but I would note some highlights here, uh, that during his leadership of the Public Works Department, which includes the city's engineering staff, street division, wastewater utility, uh, solid waste utility. Uh, Jim was instrumental in conceiving, planning, and carrying out numerous projects, a lot of infrastructure, um, investment, reinvestment by the city, often leveraging considerable state and federal funds to help us pay those bills. Notable among those projects, as listed in the resolution, are the reconstruction of Lincoln Avenue, State Highway 42 in 2017. That was obviously working with WISDOT. That 5.8 million dollar total reconstruct was recognized by the American Concrete Paving Association with an Excellence in Concrete Paving Award. That also honored Vinton Construction, the general contractor for the project, and with the Wisconsin DOT Outstanding Highway Construction Award. Uh, Jim also, uh, was, um, instrumental, working with Dave Kasebeer, our wastewater utility director, in numerous, uh, improvements at the wastewater treatment plant from, uh, reworking the sludge handling system to the front end of the plant, uh, and most recently, uh, in process now, the, uh, built the replacement of the aged belt press with a screw press at the wastewater plant. Uh, Jim also was the person that came up with the idea of the concrete beach walk at Neshota Beach, which, um, actually about $100,000 infrastructure investment that's turned that into the main thoroughfare for the beach, enhancing handicap accessibility, making it easier for parents with strollers, and also serving to a certain extent, uh, to benefits, uh, stormwater runoff there, creating a barrier between the parking lots, uh, and the beach. We'll talk about whether bicycles should be allowed on it, but it's, it's proven incredibly popular. Uh, Jim was instrumental, working with our engineering consultants and other city staff in reconstruction of critical harbor infrastructure at Coast Guard Park, including replacement of the failing seawall and development of park improvements and facilities for visiting boaters. That was about a $4 million project, uh, that city had a little over 500,000 into. It leveraged a lot of federal and state funds, including for a new water main, uh, passing underneath the harbor at that location. And then, uh, I would just note various projects associated with implementation of Two Rivers Stormwater Utility, including various examples of green infrastructure and efforts to reduce clear water discharges to our city's sanitary system. Uh, Jim, uh, served the city honorably, provided good leadership to the Public Works and Engineering Departments, and would recommend approval of this resolution, uh, a little late, but this resolution wishing him a happy retirement.
All right, thank you. Uh, looking for a motion on this one?
A motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Will second by Bonnie. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Jamie?
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Dahlke.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, on to E, which is review and discuss the status of Central Park West 365 project. Looks like we're going to discuss project fundraising status, project bidding timeline, possible new grant opportunity, and possibly other. I know we did some of this in your city manager's report.
Pretty much talked out this topic during my report. I guess I would just ask at this point if, uh, council members have any questions. Uh, I think the, the big question is, how are those bids going to look when they come in on the 26th? Uh, I would note, of course, we've got the stage ordered. We're waiting on final designs for footings and foundations, anticipating that we would have our own Public Works crews install those as they did with Rotary Pavilion, um, as force count charged against the project. And, uh, we did pull out from the bid package the 20 trees and perennial plantings. Um, basically, those, those are things that would go in at the tail end of the project, and rather than include them under the general, uh, felt it would be beneficial to get quotes on those from local vendors, because often general contractors would do a great job with grading and concrete and things like that, aren't necessarily the best with those finishing touches with the plantings. So, um, we're out to bid, and we'll see how we fare on that. The bids will be good for 60 days, so if opened on the 26th of October, uh, we'll have until, let's say, just before Christmas, not this 26th of December, but just before Christmas for a decision on award or award with, with change orders. We'll see.
Is this going to give us a complete picture? In other words, are they bidding out the whole project, including like the pumps, uh, the ice skating rink?
Everything with the exception of the things I just mentioned.
Okay, okay.
The, the stage insulate, installation. Uh, the other thing we would assume we would do with our crews would be the sodding of the area in front of the stage, and, I'm sorry, and letting separately, uh, the installation of the pavers in front of the stage. Again, there were some local area contractors, uh, recommended by Hoffman Monuments, who's been involved in a lot of projects laying pavers. So, we've basically taken the, call it the northern third of the park, and taken that out of the contract as bid, because that's the stage, the turf in front of it, and the paver area. But other than that, and that's a big exception, other than that, and the trees, um, the entirety of the project's getting bid.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I had. Does anyone else have any questions that they want answered on the project? Okay, uh, on to 12 for information only.
Sure. As, uh, Mr. Dahlke, who chairs the Personnel and Finance Committee, mentioned, uh, will be continuing to review budgets at a second meeting this Thursday, 6 o'clock here in chambers. Uh, the meeting is open to the public. Public is welcome. Uh, we will be, uh, going through the special revenue funds on Thursday. I don't expect we'll get into general fund until at least next week in any detail, but special revenue funds, including our various TIF districts, uh, on Thursday. Uh, Personnel and Finance will also meet the following week, uh, Wednesday, October 12. Same location, same time, again, public welcome. Uh, council regular, next regular meeting two weeks from tonight on October 17. And I, I just wanted to confirm this, if I might, we're, uh, October's a five Monday month. I think I said this last meeting. Um, I would recommend, in this instance, we go for, uh, the work session on the 24th to leave people free on Halloween, whether you've got kids or grandkids you're going trick-or-treating with, or whether you hope to be greeting them with the porch light on at your front door.
I think that's a good idea.
Any problems with that? Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, that's it, other than the closed session, uh, for the purposes noted on the agenda related to proposed collective bargaining agreements with our police and fire, uh, unions. And that's set for council discussion with the opportunity to reconvene in open session to, uh, possibly consider resolutions adopting each of the respective proposed agreements.
Uh, 13 is closed session. The city council reserves the right to enter into closed session, per Wisconsin Statute 19 dot 851E, when deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reason require a closed session. Tonight, we will consider, uh, the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the Two Rivers Police Local 13, and consideration of a proposed collective bargaining agreement with the Two Rivers Firefighters Local 423. We do have the possibility of reconvening in open session for the purpose of voting on both of those. Either which way, we will reconvene in open session to adjourn, uh, but there is the possibility for action. Looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jeff. Any council discussion? This is a roll call vote. Jamie?
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Dahlke.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, we'll take five minutes here, just, uh, get things ready to rock and